How this works, so if this is a target, 80% of the students will score at least 70% on the summative assessment, whatever that might be for that particular SLO. And 83% of the students scored at least 70 or above on the summative assessment. And so what that translates into for the teacher, this component of their composite score, is looking at the chart, 83% falls within the range of 82 to 84. And so 83% of the students met their target, and it's the aggregate of the student performance that factors into the teacher's score. And because that is within the effective range, the teacher would receive 14 out of 20 points toward their composite score. So I think in summarizing kind of the big ideas around student learning objectives, we are in a process of systematizing SLOs. But I think the big picture is that it is about the most important learning. It does put student learning at the center. This is with the research around when we study great teachers' practice, this is what great teachers do. It might not feel that way right now because it feels like an act of compliance, but certainly when we start looking at what we want students to know, understand, and be able to do at the end of the year, it is a part of every great teacher's practice. So we are in an accountability system, and this, of course, generates information toward the accountability. It does allow us to, you know, we listen to the BPT presentations, it allows us to start to focus professional development, to support our teachers, to support our students, to help differentiate instruction where the student needs are. All of this work has always been around engaging folks in collaborative work, that it's designed to have conversation across a grade level, across buildings, across departments, within buildings, honestly, outside of school districts. It seems wherever I go, we have conversations about SLOs, and it's everywhere I go. So I think the whole state is really grappling with this. So there has been lots of materials from the State Education Department, and I include this here because many of the resources are on Engage New York, documents that we've tried to include on our district webpage, as well as make available to teachers, as well as administration in supporting this work. And I also included additional links for your information, and for lots of examples of student learning objectives are available on the OCMBOSI's webpage if you'd like to see some of those. So I've said a lot. I've condensed student learning objectives into maybe eight minutes. What questions do you have?
Four thousand seven hundred and forty-two. It's kind of daunting.
It is daunting.
I think the fact that the timeframe was shortened for us, you know, has made it all the more cumbersome. And I'm hoping that as we learn the new language and we get the procedures and the systems down, that it will become our norm, and it will go better. But, you know, we know people are struggling, and that it's a cumbersome process in its initial stages.
It is, and I think it's complex work, and it's not to be taken lightly. And I agree with you 100% that we will learn a ton. But you're right, the idea is to go through thoughtfully and with integrity and move forward.
I have a few comments. I want to thank you for this presentation, and Dr. Dice also, because this came up in the end of August. I talked to you in September.
Sure.
Being a former teacher and not knowing what was happening, I really was not aware of all of this. I want to thank you. We're lucky to have your leadership. I know you've been in Albany mucho times to go through this, also to our teachers who have gone to Albany to be trained, and also to our great administrators. I just have a few opinions that I would like to share. In 1989, I was a teacher at Bear Road, and we had a new superintendent, as Mrs. Di Bianco knows, Dr. O'Rourke. And he stepped before the teachers and the administrators and said, "I want you to write goals." We had never written goals before. I remember tearing my hair out writing goals, 80% of the students would do this. It was a difficult process, but we worked through it. I also believe that tests do drive instruction. I believe in tests. A lot of my coworkers didn't, but I believe tests will drive instruction, and that's why we are a very good school district. However, I don't like the plan that's before us. And the reasoning I have before us is when we go back to the year I retired, which is 2007, many of these students out in the back were in elementary school. They took a state test. They took a fourth-grade state test in math, and they took it in the LA. It was not a difficult test, okay? In my classroom, I had 24, 25 students, 20 got a four. I knew I didn't have 24s in my classroom. So at that time, the test was too easy. However, we've gone now the spectrum where the test is really difficult. Three years ago, we were getting 67, 75% of our students proficient. Now we're down 50, 60, you know, we're lower. I have no problem with that because I feel that that is more of an accurate indication of where our students are in the school district. However, these are some things that I have some concerns about. The testing now, the students that are in the back took a 45-minute test. Our students now are taking an 80- to 90-minute test in third and fourth grade. That is not fair to a nine- and 10-year-old to take that kind of test. They're going to lose sight of what the story's about halfway through. And now I've been told the tests are going to be even harder this year. So for a student that's in third or fourth grade, the test is going to have algebra and math way too early for kids in third and fourth grade. So I have concerns about that. Concerns at the high school. We have an excellent program in which we give the English Regents. We've been doing this for four or five years now. We give the English Regents to all 11th graders in January. The reason we do that, because we're thinking about the students, is that about 90% of them will pass it. The other 10%, we have the remainder of the year to help them. Well, guess what? We can't do this anymore, I've told, because it's not fair to the teacher, because the teacher will only have them for half a course. So it's not fair to the teacher, but also it's not fair to the student. Now the student will have to take the test in June. They don't pass it, they either go to summer school, or they get it in 12th grade, or they don't graduate. I see our graduating rates decreasing because of this. And the thing that topped that off yesterday, or Friday, is that I asked the teacher to come to my class, to my club, to talk about helping needy people in our community, and the teacher could not come. The reason why is that she's working on stressed curriculum at our elementary level. We have teachers working on curriculum because kids are stressed out at eight and nine years. You know, I just have opinions about this, and I don't know where we're going with it, but I don't like it. And that's my opinion. And I know the governor has tied in the money to the taxpayers there in the audience. The reason we have a 2% tax limit is it's tied into this. Yet we don't get funding from New York for all these mandates that we have that we have to do. So where do we have to do? We have to charge the public for it. So I don't know where we're going. I just wanted my opinion out there. I hope it gets better. Thank you.
Just to clarify though, Bob, that is the state's throwing this.
Right.
The state, just to clarify, the state is putting all these mandates on us and forcing -- that's okay, I just wanted to make sure. Okay. Anyone else? I just, I think, again, all of the people involved in this process, from administrators to teachers, have done a yeoman's job in working through this. This is, first of all, it's a daunting task to put it all together in the short timeframe, but it's also a very, very big shift from the way things have been done throughout all of the years that I've been involved in, many more than that. And it's not an easy thing for someone to have the way their job is looked at changed, or the way they have to do their job changed. And it really takes a lot of courage, and it takes dedication on behalf of the people to be proactive and say, "Well, if this is what the state's sending down to us, then let's figure out a way that we can kind of be involved in what decisions are being made, rather than wait until they say this is what you have to do." Tremendous job, all of you. You spent a lot of time in Albany. As a matter of fact, if I'm not mistaken, our school district was one of the most prepared relative to all of the APPR and all of these things because of the fact that we had so many people involved in the first stages. So, again, a wonderful job. And to Bob's point, our children are being asked to do things that they shouldn't have to do. An 80-minute, I mean, I would have trouble sitting in for an 80-minute test, let alone expecting a fourth grader or a third grader too. So, great job, and again, thanks goes out to all of those folks who spent a lot of time working on this.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
And also, just to add, we continue to hear, we had a retreat two weeks ago, and we continue to hear about how stressed teachers, administrators, districts are across the state. But as we focus on what we do here in North Syracuse, kudos goes out to all of our teachers, our staff, who worked diligently to ensure that we were able to meet the deadline of October 9th.
The 16th.
The 16th. And so we appreciate that. We recognize, day in and day out, how stressful it is just to stay on task and to stay focused. And with each day that I visit schools, I see that our teachers are just, you know, working extra hard to ensure that students are engaged. I've had conversations with teachers who are tested out themselves and recognize how stressed our students are, but they continue to still walk into our buildings with a smiling face, working diligently to ensure that our students receive a quality program. So as the board, as superintendent, as leadership, we will continue to ensure that we're providing you with the kind of supports you need to be successful, but also ensuring that we are keeping you abreast of all of the changes that are taking place moment by moment, minute by minute. And we'll continue to get the word out. We recognize that the commissioner is pretty much staying the course, but that doesn't mean that we still can't have our voice heard. Thank you.
Okay, budget status.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have a very brief presentation to share with you on budget assumptions. And the reason we talk about budget assumptions now is to, before we can do a very detailed budget and talk about all the hundreds of accounts and expenditure line items that we have to budget, we have to kind of take a step back and look at the big picture. And the purpose of this presentation is to share some of those elements with you at this time. So we're going to look at the, you know, local economic indicators. We'll talk a little later in tonight's board meeting about enrollment. We'll talk about some things that we know about revenues and expenditures, and we'll talk about how we are looking at our programs at this stage in the budget process, and then where capital projects fit in. So first, the local economic indicators. Consumer Price Index. The chart that I'm displaying here indicates the rate at which prices have gone up each month and cumulatively on a 12-month basis. And this is important to us for a number of reasons. It helps us see what we might expect in terms of cost increases for the various expenses we incur. And as many of you know, our tax cap, one element of that, is based on the lower of inflation or 2%. And as you see from this chart, it's early yet. Right now, CPI is trending at 1.7% on a 12-month basis. And so we're going to be watching that closely. And State Ed will come out with a formal CPI number, I believe, in January that will be the basis for our tax cap calculations. The other thing we look at is what's happening in the local economy. Have any large new businesses moved in or moved out? Are there things that might affect our tax base? And at this stage, we're not aware of anything significant happening in the local economy that would negatively impact our local taxes or positively impact the local taxes. Unemployment's another factor, and the chart here shows our central New York unemployment by month, and it's ranging in the 8% to 8.5% range. And so obviously, when we think about, this has been a very difficult time in not only U.S. history, but our local history in terms of the economy, we have to be very sensitive to the struggles of our local taxpayers, and unemployment still hovers around 8% to 8.5%. And so that'll be a factor as we look at the local economic indicators. Moving on to revenues, much of this information I've shared with the board previously, but these are some of the assumptions we're working with. As we know, that the local sales tax sharing agreement has had a negative impact on school districts. The impact this year will be $200,000, based on the information we know today. Building aid, we're going to see a decline in building aid because last year we received two years' worth of aid on Smith Road. This year we'll only receive one year of aid on Smith Road. Building aid is also going to be impacted because we, as have many districts across the state, have worked to refinance our debt in this low-interest-rate environment. And what the state has said is that all of our state aid, and let me back up for a second, all of our building aid is based on assumed interest rates. And what the state is doing is recalculating that building aid that they're providing us based on new, lower-interest rates. And so we're in the process of recalculating that, but that has to be part of our base assumptions, that we're going to get less building aid on existing projects than we historically have as a result of that recalculation of the interest component. Estimated general aid is going to be in the range of 3% to 3.5%. We're assuming 3%, which is about $1.4 million of state aid. If it was 3.5%, to put that in perspective, it's probably another $250,000, so maybe the 1.4, we'd go to 1.6 or 1.7 million. So we'll be watching that closely and with our ear to Albany to see what's happening in the state in terms of state aid. And real property taxes. I'm still assuming at this point, despite the chart I showed you a few slides ago, that our tax cap will be based on 2%. And so until we get more information, I think that's a safe assumption, and we'll work with that in our initial budget calculations. I will say one other thing that we're not assuming at this stage of the game is that Hurricane Sandy and the economic impact on the state will have any negative impact on school aid. We don't know that at this point, but we're making the assumption that there'll be no impact. On the expenditure side, we're assuming our health benefits will continue to rise. We've looked at a lot of different indicators, and we believe that it's conceivable our health benefits costs could go up 10%. On the retirement side, we just got information from TRS, and the rate could go from 11.84 to 6.5% of payroll, 16.5% of payroll, I should say. And that's the high end of the range that was quoted to us. So we're hopeful that maybe it won't be quite 16.5%, but we've got to make the assumption that it's going to go as high as that. That would be a 39% increase. ERS, we're looking at an increase of, from 18.4% to 20.8% of wages, or about a 13% increase. Our labor contracts, many of them have settled, as many of them have followed the teachers' lead and have had a 0% increase for the year we're in. So the next budget year, the 12, 13, the 13, 14 year, would have a 1% increase. Fuel costs, let me explain that for a minute. In our current year's budget, we assumed that fuel costs would actually be higher than they are right now. So we think it's safe for our initial portion of the budget to have a zero increase in fuel costs. Although energy costs, as I mentioned at a previous board meeting, we've been very fortunate. We bid out our gas and electric. We're going to realize a savings of about a half a million dollars in the 12, 13 year, and we think that savings will be about $400,000 in the 13, 14 year. We continue to be in regular communication with BOSIs about opportunities to work more closely with them, and, you know, and we're going to continue those discussions through the budget process to see where we can kind of leverage the things that they're doing. But we're also going to assume that their costs will increase at the rate of inflation, that 1.7 to 2%. And then we're looking closely, Alicia did a great job sharing information about SLOs. We're traveling new ground here, and the APPR Common Core standards, the implications are kind of unknown in terms of what the impact on labor and the efforts that our staff are putting forward. And so we're going to be watching that closely as we head into the budgeting process so we can better understand how we should budget for those costs going forward. On the program side, two things. You know, obviously, we continue to discuss full-day kindergarten. And full-day kindergarten, as you know, has facilities implications, because if we went from half-day kindergarten to full-day kindergarten, we'd need twice as many classrooms. And so we've kind of tied full-day kindergarten to our facilities planning process. Depending on how that plays out, if we move forward with full-day kindergarten, it would have an impact on the 13, 14 year. If we move forward with it in connection with a facilities plan and all the other things we're talking about in facilities planning, it might not occur until the 14, 15 year. But we're watching full-day kindergarten closely and looking at calculations, which we've done to look at what that cost might be. Excuse me. On the program evaluation side, I mentioned previously that the program evaluation process is underway, and this is a process where directors, working with principals and others, reflect on the programs that we're offering our North Syracuse students. And they're considering a number of factors, such as the trends in student participation, academic performance, whether and how the program supports the strategic plan, historical outcomes of that program, expected future outcomes of the program, the cost and the cost per student, and whether the program's mandated. We've got a standard format that we're using to go through these discussions. Recommendations will be made regarding the programs along, around, between Thanksgiving and the beginning of the new year, and the recommendations will include things like expanding the program, modifying the program, or even eliminating the program. And these recommendations will be the basis for our budget discussions and calculations. And obviously, any recommendations that are made will be discussed thoroughly with all the stakeholders, as well as the Board of Education prior to adopting any budget for 13, 14. Regarding capital projects, we're assuming, and I think it's a safe assumption, given where we are in the process, that there'll be no capital projects underway during the 13, 14 school year. As you know, we've just completed a roofing project this summer. Last year, we completed Smith Road, and we don't have a project in the queue that would be taking place in the 13, 14 year. Kind of gives us a little bit of a breather. Our facilities committee is in the process of forming, and we'll be looking at the specifics of projects that the facilities committee would recommend, bring to the Board of Education, obviously with input from the community, and that work would take place in the 14, 15 year. So next year, we'll have a bit of a breather. And that concludes, you know, the base assumptions that we have at this point as we begin the budget process. Does anybody have questions for me?
To go back on the assumptions, the fuel costs, you said you don't feel a long to increase. Is that because of the bid lock?
Well, no. So fuel, when I think of fuel, I'm thinking transportation, diesel fuel, gasoline. And based on the, remember how this budget process works? We have a fuel budget in our budget right now. We think that budget is a little more than we're going to spend this year, so we've built an increase in. So fuel costs are actually running right now a little lower than we budgeted. And so we're thinking that the increase that we've got budgeted for this year will occur next year, and therefore the budget won't need to be increased. And if it is, it's going to be very nominal, we think, anyway. Who knows? You know, I don't have a crystal ball, but based on the data we've seen.
My thinking was just in terms of, without the disasters, you know, speaking today and today, you are waiting four, five, six hours on the after. Okay. Thank you. That's better. You know, the other, you know, the other thing, again, that you alluded to, which was the cost associated with APPR and many of the new mandates, and, you know, frankly, that's a great concern. At one point, the governor was going to assist us with some of these costs, and from what we've read recently, it doesn't look like that assistance will be forthcoming. And that, too, is a concern.
And I think it's, at this stage of the game, we think it's a significant enough event that the district's going through that we at least have to have it on our radar, and it's just an unknown at this point. We know a tremendous amount of human effort is being expanded or expended to make these initiatives successful, and I think we just want to make sure that we keep it on our radar so when we do our labor budget next year, we're thoughtful about that.
I think, but I do think it's also important to add, given what has taken place with the hurricane, that we may be back with a whole set of new numbers. So, you know, as that information comes in, we will ensure that we're informing the board and the public of what those changes may look like and what the implications are. Because in our initial conversations, we think there may be, you know, huge implications as a result.
Don, the estimated general aid, are those numbers, or is that assumption based on any, to say, concrete?
Yeah, as a matter of fact.
Information coming from Albany would be a dichotomy.
One of the things that has been a challenge from a state aid perspective is the instability of the aid. And I think the governor and the legislature have tried to put some predictability in place, and so they have put out numbers. If you remember last year, there was a talk of a 4.1% or $805 million of additional aid going to schools. This year, they're talking about as much as 3% to 3.5% or about $760 million of aid to schools. So it'll be less than we got last year in additional aid, at least what's being communicated at this point. As the board knows, we subscribe to a service called Questar III BOSIs. They help us with our state aid projections, and the data that's on this slide is taken from our fall conference. So it's at least a reasonable starting point in the state aid projection process.
Any other questions? Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
All the participation in government students, if you'd like to come up, and we'll sign your forms for you.
Mark, can you turn it on?
Yeah, I know, there's a lot of them here.
How are you?
We will. Anybody can sign them.
Hey. Did you find you? Yes.
Yes.
...acknowledge that, that presentation, the receipt of that presentation. So I need a motion to acknowledge the receipt of the 2013, 2014 budget assumptions. Scott, second. Michael, call in favor. That's unanimous. Okay, we have comments from the audience this evening. Before we start, I'd just like to, to, when we came in this morning, or this evening, there was a, a notice posted, and a different notice posted on the actual sign-in sheet. In the past, many times when there were comments from the audience, we would preface those comments by, by making a statement similar to this, saying that, you know, things similar that, that's written there. We kind of, in an effort to, kind of remain, be a little more transparent and to allow a little bit more flexibility, we kind of got away from that. At the last meeting, I had to stop one of the speakers, and, and I have to say, I have to compliment the two speakers last meeting, because they, they were professional, they were courteous, and they showed great decorum after, after I requested that they, that they stop. Essentially, what, what we'd like everyone to do here is, we're, we're going to try to get back toward, to our, kind of our former protocol. It really isn't former, it's former, it's always been the protocol, in the sense that we would ask the speakers to, to be courteous and to respect decorum, and to not make, use that forum to make personal attacks on anyone on any side of any issue. I think I said at last, last meeting to one of the gentlemen who was going to talk about leadership, that he could talk about leadership and get his point across without, you know, making personal attacks on anyone. So it's with that, that I would request that you, we used to say that, you know, it's advisable that we don't use names or specific situations. Sometimes, that's a little difficult to do, but, you know, in, in protection of, of any students' rights, or any administrators, or, or principals, or anyone, it's preferable that, that we don't do that. Also, again, it's, it's a, it's an, it's a meeting that's open to the public, not kind of an open public meeting. We are looking at scheduling listening sessions during the course of this year. We're working on that as part of a, a way for there to be a little bit more open dialogue back and forth. The meetings are, are set up the way they are and ran the way they are, so that we can take care of the business that needs to be taken care of. So we're working at listening sessions, so that it'll be, there'll be a little more back and forth, because it may not look as though we're listening, because in this format, we don't usually answer questions, and we don't usually banter back and forth in this scenario. So with that, I'd like to call our first speaker, Jack. Shop. Come on right up, Jack. Welcome. Try not to be nervous, it's not.
What was that?
Just the mic. It's just a little feedback from the microphone.
Dear School Board and Dr. Dice, Hello, my name is Jack Shop. I am in Mr. Bacon's fourth grade class in Ele, in Allen Road Elementary School. I am learning about, like, I am learning how to be a leader. A leader sees when something is wrong and tries to fix it. If you're a leader, why can't you help with this problem? Next year, I am going to a school that my sister got attacked in. Although I have lots of friends that stick up for me, I might get picked on by sixth and seventh graders. My friends not, might get picked on, and I might not be able to, um, help them. I know that the superintendent, the principal, and the teachers didn't help my sister enough. She was hurt very badly. She was scared then, and she is still scared. It shouldn't be like this. I look up to my sister because she stood up to a bully. I know that my sister, my brother, and my parents will always protect, protect me. Who will protect me when I'm with them? Will you? Well, when I'm not with them? When a child tells you they are being bullied, please help them. Please help my sister because she's scared. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
Do you want me to just start?
Yeah. Try to talk into that one, to your right.
This one?
There you go, yeah.
Okay.
There you go.
Um, since I was in kindergarten, I've been told, if another person was bothering me, to tell an adult, and they would take care of it. That seems to not be true, considering the fact that myself and many others have had to beg for peace of mind and safety in this district. That's not right. Something in the system needs to change. I came to you June 18th and asked what you were going to do to ensure my safety. You had told me the superintendent would get back to me. It's been five months, and nobody's gotten back to me. During those five months, I've gone through depression and bad anxiety. I had to go to three doctor's appointments a week. I was too scared to leave my house sometimes, in fear of coming into contact with my attacker. You've talked to my parents, but you can't really understand my concerns from that. You wrote policies and procedures to enforce the Dignity Act. The Dignity Act says no child should have to go to school in fear. I have post-traumatic stress disorder, and you're letting my attacker back in, back into school, and I'm not completely through my recovery. I'm going to be so scared, I probably be, won't be able to function very well. I shouldn't be the one that has my education affected. You're not really enforcing the things that you say. You can have as many assemblies and preach as much as you want about how bullying is bad. It's not making much of a difference. You need to enforce the rules that you make about bullying, and ensure the safety of me and other students.
Good evening.
Oh, be careful.
My name is Stephanie Piston, and I am a parent with children attending schools in the North Syracuse District. I'm speaking out tonight because I'm concerned about the lack of enforcement regarding bullying policies in the district. Last fall, I was invited by CNY Central News to man the phones to take viewers' questions about bullying, and offer advice and resources. I was asked to do this because I'm a state action leader for the Love is Not Abuse Coalition, which is now part of Break the Cycle, a national charity aimed at stopping teen dating violence and awareness. We also work with and promote anti-bullying programs and groups. We have found this because many of the characteristics of a bully are seen as someone who is also an abuser. The calls I took were heartbreaking, parents and children reaching out for help, and who go to, and who to go to to report the incidents or get general information. What shocked me the most was that 50% of my phone calls named schools in this district, where the bullying was taking place, and no one seemed interested in helping. This is disturbing, to say the least, especially in light of new cases of bullying arising in the district, some with serious physical harm to the victim. The Dignity for All Students Act became law July 1st of 2012. Yet, my youngest child just brought home a paper regarding this law on Friday, November 2nd, 2012. Why such a delay in getting this information to the parents? This should have been sent to the students and their parents the first day of school, so that what everyone would be aware of the law. Updates could be sent later as to what the district has complied with. In reviewing the district guidelines and policies, the district states in Section 5311.1 that student assault is a prohibited behavior subject to disciplinary penalties, and that highly serious infractions may warrant more serious penalties even absent to prior discipline. I would assume as a parent that a violent assault that leads to long-term physical and mental injuries with an unknown length of recovery would fall under highly serious infractions. But from what I understand in regards to the incident of June 2012 at Roxborough Middle School, the attacker doesn't seem to warrant the severest of penalties. While the incident happened prior to the DASSA law, the victim still falls under it in regards to her mental and emotional well-being. Allowing her attacker back to school most certainly places this young woman in a threatening situation and could violate the law. In your own guidelines, you state, bullying is carried out with the intent to harm someone who cannot defend themselves. Bullying is unfair and one-sided. It cannot, it can be repeated over time, or it can be a one-time occurrence. The attacker is a bully, and one who has not shown any real remorse. She is a threat to the victim and the students at large. The needs of the many must take priority over the needs of one student who has committed a violent act. Let that student be removed from the district and be homeschooled, not the victim. She has been hurt enough and needs to know that the district and the superintendent are supporting her, not trying to victimize her again. As someone who suffers from post-traumatic stress disorder and panic attacks, one of the key things to recovery is to have the triggers removed from your space, your environment. Allowing the attacker back will make things worse for this victim, and can trigger panic attacks, which could hinder her progress and recovery. It is time for this school board and this superintendent to do the right thing, protect the victim and the rest of your students in your care. It is not enough to end bullying by putting up posters in the hallways about standing up to bullies and zero tolerance policies. Do more than show a video that has 10% information about the DASSA Act. Edmund Burke once said, "All that is necessary for the triumph of evil is that good men do nothing." Bullying and assault are an evil. I know this board is full of good men and women. I ask that you no longer do nothing. It is time to take action. Thank you.
My name is Vicky Barrett, and I'm a parent of a fifth grader at Roxborough and a third grader at Allen Road. I'm here on behalf of all the concerned parents regarding bullying in our district and how it's being handled. My son reported bullying, and I'm worried of retaliation because of the story that I had heard just recently. Thankfully, nothing has happened to him. He weighs about 55 pounds, soaking wet, so I was very scared for his safety. I've had three meetings with the principal of Roxborough, and I know with all my heart that he and his team are committed to making sure that things change at his school. I think, could your child be a bully? I asked some parents, maybe you're a bully. Frequent name-calling, regular bragging, lack of sympathy, constant need to get their own way, defiant, hostile attitudes. Regarding the stories that we've heard tonight, it sickens me. Do you really believe it's in the best interest for the attacker to come back to school? Have you considered extending the alternative schooling that she is in? You should. Again, is it in her best interest? It led her to make a bad decision. She has a lot of enemies, I'm sure, I imagine. Is mainstream education right for her? No. She was only out of school for June, the end of June, September, October, for a few weeks, and then November, for literally beating a girl to the point where this poor child, and I underline "child," suffers from disabilities. Dignity for All Students Act? I put a question mark next to that. Please consider more adult, uh, eyes in the hallways during unstructured times in the schools. Don't say it's not in the budget. Find it. If we put something in action early in early education, maybe we can see a decline in bullying. Perfect our bullying, uh, prevention programs and get tougher. Lastly, if the children's basic safety needs are not being met, learning will not be a priority. They will not engage in school properly. They will not engage in school properly and that would be doing an incredible disservice to our children, and I'm sure you all could agree. Thank you.
Caitlin Sikora.
Hello, my name is Caitlin Sikora and by looking at me, you might assume I'm a normal schoolgirl. I am not. Everybody has their own differences and people hate them for it. There are groups in our schools, goths, all those kinds of different things. And as soon as something comes along that threatens their little bubble, they freak out and they do everything in their power to destroy it. That is where bullying starts. Something has threatened their bubble and they don't like it. People have no, no right to do anything like this. They shouldn't have to suffer the way that they do. Nobody, nobody should suffer this way. No one tells anybody because nothing is ever done. They go to a teacher, they say, hey, something needs to be done about this, and nothing ever is. The school maybe speaks to them, possibly even kicks them out of school for a couple days and then lets them come back. Students suffer in school, people's grades lower because they're scared of what other people around them are going to do. They can't concentrate on their schoolwork because of the insults and stress that they face from everybody else. They feel like everybody is against them and it hurts them. It burns them from the inside. That's why people hurt themselves and cut, because nobody thinks that anything will ever be done about it. That's just about all I can say, is that everybody is stressed and they feel like nothing should be done, nothing can be done, and something should be.
Thank you. Do we have any board committee reports?
Just that the legislative committee will be meeting on Tuesday, November 20th at 6 o'clock in the district office. We had our first meeting on October 16th. I thought it was well-attended by board members, administrators, and students and parents. And we will continue to look at the school budget and where we can go by May. Thanks.
Any comments? Dr. Dyson?
Oh, I did, I thought Cindy was going to say something.
Go ahead, Cindy.
I just want to, again, congratulate some of our students. Our boys' golf team this year was champions of the league and at this time, it probably is over, but our boys are playing soccer against Utica Proctor. Utica Proctor had won nothing in the first half and probably find out more about that tonight. Thank you.
Dr. Dyson?
I've had the opportunity to visit a number of classrooms and as always, I wanted to, oh, I'm sorry. And as always, I wanted to highlight the hard work and great work of some of our teachers. I visited with Mrs. Stasco last week and she was doing a left-to-right orientation and story recall by reading in what's called the big book about animal babies. This was a kindergarten class and the students were truly engaged in identifying the actual animals and recalling what they had learned from page to page. I also had the opportunity to sit in Mrs. Maniaci's class. And in this class, they were learning about making predictions and testing their theory out. And the prediction was, can pumpkins float? And the classroom next to hers was filled with pumpkins on the floor and students had the opportunity to go in and test their predictions and then come back and talk about it. I also had the opportunity to visit with Mrs. Connors at Gillette and the students there were engaged in the process of an archaeologist's dig. They were learning about the tools, the soil samples, as well as how delicate the process was. And what she ended up doing was coming up with this amazing assignment called Jellotasia. And the students had the opportunity to basically do an archaeologist's dig using a jello mold that she had created for each one of her students. She created almost 80 of them. And the students had a ball as they were going through learning and being able to do their assignment as they ate through their jello mold. And so she had like four different layers and then on top, she had a type of cereal, colorful, I can't remember what it was. But the students were truly engaged. This was an assignment that she said she had developed, I believe, years ago, but it was just awesome to see how engaged the students were, what they were learning, and then last but not least, the fact that they got to eat each layer as they were digging. This week, well, last week and into this week, and some board members also visited with me. I spent some time with Mrs. Gangloff and Mrs. Marzullo in their third grade class. The students there were fully engaged in the presidential election. They were learning about who the candidates were, the different parties, and what they stood for. And in this lesson, both teachers had a candidate from the Gangloff class and a candidate from the Marzullo class. And these two students, A.J. and Juliana, were the individuals who were selected to give speeches to the full class. And today, I had the pleasure, myself and Kay, we visited today as the students participated in the debate. And there were a number of very intense questions that were being asked of the candidates about their thoughts on homework during the weekend and easier homework versus more difficult homework and the conversation around what should happen to bullies. Tomorrow, the students will then come in and have the opportunity to vote on the candidate of their choice and by Wednesday, we will know who the winner is. So I wanted to take the time to at least highlight some of the teachers that I had the opportunity to talk to. Clearly, our teachers are working hard to make the learning experience engaging and for that, I thank you. And I can't not say that I did indeed enjoy myself. It's the best part of my day and I enjoy spending time with the students and the teachers, just having the opportunity to talk to them about their assignments and the activities. It's just really, you know, the best part of the job. And as I continue to visit schools, as I always say, any board member who has the time, you know, and wants to come and hang out with me for a couple hours, you are truly welcome to do so. Thank you.
Routine action items, are there any questions or discussion on them? Can I have a motion to take A, B, C, D, and E as a group? Sandy, second, Michael Gonofrio. Recommended action is to approve A, B, C, D, and E as submitted. All in favor? That's unanimous. Item F is the consideration of a bid award. Were there any questions or discussion on that item? Recommended action is to award contract 2013-7 to Music and Arts Center in the amount of $8,945 as the lowest responsible bidder, meeting the specifications. Motion? Sandy, second, Michael Marizio. All in favor? And that's unanimous. Discussion items is the district enrollment data. Who's going to discuss the enrollment data? Don?
No, I was just going to say, on the music bid, there was another bid there for Sam Ash.
Really?
For music.
Okay. Let me go back, hold on. Oh, it's not, it's not in here in the verbiage. Okay, then we'll amend that motion if we could to award contract. Are there different contracts numbers or is it this?
Hang on one second, let me just make sure I've worked on this.
Some bid on parts of it, was it, Don?
Connie, are you familiar with this bid?
Can we, do you want us to pull it and we can bring it back?
Yeah, we can let it stand the way you did. Let's do the bid.
No, there's one, it's one.
I think it's just the one.
Award, the contract, music, and art center in the amount of 89. It's only one on the backup.
Right, because there were two bidders for that one item.
I got it, okay.
And if the other bid was lower, yeah, it was two out of the five items, so they didn't meet the qualifications.
Got it, okay. Thank you, I apologize.
That's okay. Okay, district enrollment data.
Yeah, I'll make a comment on that, if that's okay.
Okay, please.
As I mentioned in the budget update, that one of the other assumptions we look at is enrollment data. And Donna Marie Norton pulled a lot of information together, which you had in your board package. I won't go through all of that, it's quite a bit of data, but I wanted to bring your attention to a few things. As we look at enrollment projections, it's been a good practice of the district to look at how have we done in past projections? So last year, the district, as you saw in your materials, we had predicted that we would have 9,151 students as of right now, our beds date. And we in fact have 9,136 students, we're only 15 students off. So our predictions seem to be tracking reasonably well. Our last year's actual enrollment was about 9,236 students. So it's down about 100 students or 1.1%. And that's another indicator that we benchmark against other districts. Although, like other districts in New York State, our enrollment is declining, it seems to be declining at a lower rate. Another factor that's worth pointing out is that comparing our middle schools and the trends at our middle schools, we seem to have a larger concentration of population at our Gillette Road Middle School. Comparing the recent beds data, we currently have 1,255 students at Gillette Road versus 921 at Roxborough Road Middle School, or a difference of about 334 students. So that's going to be something that we're going to want to look at as we head into the budget cycle and maybe more importantly, as we head into the facilities planning process. Finally, just looking at where we're predicting and will be the basis for our budget, we're looking at enrollment next year, thinking it'll decline about another 153 students, bringing our enrollment down below 9,000. And so that's the assumption that we're going to move forward on, based on the data that we are working with in making our enrollment projections. And I should add that our enrollment projections are based on live birth data presented to the district by the Department of Census, the Census Bureau. And that live birth data that we receive is based on our school district area, so it's particular to our school district and has proven to be pretty reliable. Unless there's any other questions on the enrollment data, that's the only comments I had.
I had a few comments. Some trends that I see that hopefully we can get some answers to. Looking at the elementary schools, I see that Allen Road and Roxborough Road, basically, they're leveling off for the next five years. But I have a concern that out up north, where in the past, there's been a lot of growth, there's going to be about a 70-student decline at both Lakeshore and especially Cicero. Cicero, when I was there, we were at 600 and there was redistricting the year I was there, but it will be below 500. I have a concern that Lakeshore, if this trend continues, will be below 500 along with Lakeshore. Interesting, the two schools in the Village, or where the Village kids are going to increase by 70. I'm thinking maybe that's, homes are turning over to young families that were with older...
The cost of those homes, Rob.
I'm sorry?
The cost of those homes.
But anyway, the growth seems to be, at Bear Road, is going to grow by 70 kids the next seven years or five years, and Smith Road. So it's an interesting trend that I think we need to look at as we move forward.
Yeah, it's always been funny that all those building lots were up north and it seems like people are buying them, but they don't have children.
Yeah, so that was one of our biggest surprises coming into this year, as we had less students at Cicero L., significantly less than we expected at Cicero.
Well, that's something that, again, we've said for years that we need to keep a close eye on.
The trend for loss of population, though, is statewide and there was an article in the previous board newspaper on board about the trends. And actually, locally, we're losing population at a lower rate than other districts in this part of the state and in Western New York. We're actually holding our population pretty well. The other thing that was interesting to see is the downward trend of parochial school kids and that, again, I think is an economic factor. And I think if we do go to full-day kindergarten, unfortunately for them, that will impact them further because a lot of our students will go to the parochial schools because of the full-day kindergarten for the first year.
Yeah, there's three or four of my coworkers who have children that either go to the parochial schools for kindergarten or they go to the after-school program at the Y and say that, you know, that it would be more cost-effective for them to, if their taxes were to go up a little bit for all-day kindergarten, then to pay the money that they have to pay. So it's certainly being watched very carefully, I think. Anyone else?
Adoption of the North Syracuse Central School District Mission Statement. Were there any, was someone going there? Everybody look at this, were there any questions or comments or? Ready, okay? Okay, recommended action is to approve the North Syracuse Central School District Mission Statement. And Bob made the motion, second, Michael Marizio. All in favor? That's unanimous. Request to approve corrective action plan for management letter as required by the Office of the State Controller. Don, did you just want to talk about that real quick?
Sure. So the corrective action plan, I think that the first thing I would note, being my first audit with the district, I was happy to see that our auditors had no, did not identify any material weaknesses. But there are two areas that they want to bring particular focus to. And one is a multi-year budgeting process. And I think our strategic plan provides us with a good foundation for multi-year budgeting and planning as we start to think about the programs that we want to build and retain here in North Syracuse. And so it's the foundation we need to work forward on a multi-year budgeting process and we agreed with our auditors that we would begin to do that in connection with the 2013-14 planning cycle. The other one that they brought to our attention that was pretty significant, that has been on the minds of probably every board member and every public servant, is the ongoing unfunded post-retirement health benefits. And as you know, and it was disclosed in our audit, you know, we've got a number that's approaching $50 million of unfunded benefits. And it sounds like a big number, many districts have more than that, you know, and so it's a liability that we're going to continue to watch and watch the accounting pronouncements, the districts in compliance with all of the GASP-45 requirements, which is the requirements for how we report and disclose those future liabilities. But I can, rest assured, we're in no worse shape than any other public entity in New York State in that regard. But it's something the auditors want to make sure that we keep... Uh, but it's something the auditors want to make sure that we keep, uh, um, in, in the, in the front of our planning efforts, so we're aware of that future liability. The other comments they had related to extra classroom activity funds, and, and one of the realizations I think we came to, uh, I think this has been a cyclical thing here at North Syracuse, and by the way, at other districts as well. And one of the things that we, uh, for the folks in the audience, it's, uh, um, it's all of those clubs and activities that we, we run, uh, from, at the junior high and high school, and, um, what, one of the really, realizations we came to is that we're constantly rotating new students into the process and, and sometimes new advisors, and, and these are a lot of good people working hard to try to do the right thing, and, and so, we, we really need to redouble our training efforts, and that's really our response to, to all of the extra classroom activities, is that we're going to work hard to look at our, our training materials, um, and to do some additional training of students, and we're working, as a matter of fact, you folks all know John Nadler, John has agreed to help us put a video together, we're going to try to, uh, put a training video together and put it out on our website, so that ki, that kids that are in clubs, um, can go out and look at the, the video on how they should manage some of the basic accounting for their club activities. And our auditors were very excited about that prospect, um, and will, uh, will work hard on that and will keep you folks posted, but that's the summary of their comments.
And, and they did say that, that we've made significant strides in that area, um, considering where we were when they've, when we, as a board, expressed concern and asked them to start, um, kind of looking in, looking at that, so. Are there any questions? Okay, the recommended board action is that the board approve the corrective action plan, action plan for management letter as required by the Office of the State of the New York Controller. Motion? Scott, second George, all in favor? That's unanimous. Item C is the resolution authorizing a tax searchory settlement agreement with Walgreens versus the town of Cicero. Throughout the course, the, was there anything special we needed to know on this one?
No, this is the one we spoke at the, the last board meeting with the, the Walgreens property. Um, I think that the, the general consensus is that it is overvalued, and the district's prepared to make, uh, or the, the district's prepared to support a, a revised assessment that's lower, but, but not as low as, uh, Walgreens would like, and so.
And we do set aside funds for these very searcho, these very searchories.
That's correct.
Um, our council, our lead council, has experts in this area that negotiate these, um, these settlements. It used to be in the past that, that these, um, these settlements would include prior year reimbursements. I believe that this, well, it has been the, the case of late that they do not include prior year reimbursements, and this is, this is such on this one, isn't it, Don?
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions on that? Recommended action is to approve that res, searchoy resolution. Do I have a motion? Sandy, second Michael Marizio, all in favor? That's unanimous. Item D is the acknowledgement of gifts. Uh, we, as we say, uh, each time we acknowledge gifts, we appreciate the efforts of, of those in our community, both parents, uh, business people, uh, that support our district with gifts such as these. We would not be able to do all of the good things that we do without them. So with that, uh, Ms. Susannah Cook, uh, ESL teacher at Roxborough Road Middle School, was awarded from Donors Choose for a classroom project called Sh. We, we hear our own voices, the value of this award is approximately a hundred and forty-seven dollars, which Ms. Cook will use for classroom materials. Mr. and Mrs. Gary Grethel donated one flute, one clarinet, and two beginner violins to the North Syracuse Central School District. Target donated fifty-dollar gift cards to be used in support of student instructional needs and building events for the Roxborough Road Middle School. Mr. Christopher Gates from Cytrax Corporation donated a thousand dollars to Cicero Elementary School PTG for the purchase of leveled literacy materials to be used by their AIS department. And Target donated two twenty-five-dollar gift cards for every twenty-five parents who liked Target on Facebook. Their child's school was giving a twenty-five-dollar gift card. This gift will be used to support PTO initiatives and activities at Allen Road Elementary School. The recommended action is to accept with gratitude the above gifts. Motion, Scott. Second Mike Marizio, all in favor? That's unanimous also. Item E is the recommendation to create a temporary typist two. Annette?
Tonight we heard Alicia give a presentation on student learning objectives, and then we heard Don indicate that there are some funding, there's some funding associated with APPR and what's coming forward that we need to keep an eye on. And tonight we're asking you to create a temporary typist position due to the fact that as part of the student learning objectives, there was an incredible amount of data that needed to be input into a system that had to do with the pre-assessments that all the teachers had to give. We asked a typist two to come in, and it turned out that it ended up being twenty-two days, which was more than we anticipated. The contract requires anything twenty days or more, the individual's entitled to contract rate, and civil service regulations also support that. So in order to pay the individual the appropriate amount that she is due, we need you to create this position so we can proceed and send the appropriate information to civil service.
Any questions? Comments? Recommended action is to approve the resolution. Motion? Michael Denofrio, second Michael Marizio, all in favor? That's unanimous. Any questions or comments on the surplus of equipment?
The, the items, yeah, the items here are just basically junk, broken, broken items that, uh, that have little to no value.
Recommended board action is to declare the non-marketable surplus equipment as surplus to be disposed, and the marketable surplus equipment and software to be stored at the Anadaga County Storage Facility until auctioned by the county. Motion? George, second Bob, all in favor? That's unanimous. Policy eight-two-one-one, access to school buildings amend and re-adopt. Are there any questions? Recommended action is to approve the amendment of, and re-adoption of policy eighty-two-eleven, access to school buildings. Motion? Sandy, second? Mike Denofrio, all in favor? And that's unanimous also. Before we take up personnel items A and B, do we, does anyone need an executive session? Okay. Catherine has made a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel items A and B. I'll second that motion, all in favor? And, um, we'll go into executive session and we'll be, be back. You know what we should do? We should have them get us a room closer.
Are they A?
A.
No.
B, right?
Okay, you accompany me to my...
Which one was she gonna?
She was gonna...
That was...
Spring coaches, right?
I need good help.
She was gonna pull from that one, there was another one.
We're gonna take out the varsity softball.
Well, I...
Wait, are we taking it out?
My cousin's...
No, for her. We're gonna separate.
I was at her household, they did it at work.
We're gonna separate.
Who's the one she was gonna stay on because she doesn't, she thinks the father?
I'm not sure.
Where, where's she going?
He's gonna walk down the ramp. Who was the one she was asking about whose father?
Matt.
Matt, where is that one? There or there?
She's coming back from leave, I don't understand, she's coming back from leave. It's way back.
It's way back.
Okay.
No.
Um, I don't either. Other than the fact that we take bullying seriously...
And, um, so there's, there's this one.
For all of our students and we're going to continue to focus on ensuring that all of our students are safe in our school and have the ability to receive a quality educational program.
Yeah.
It's this one, right? This one?
Yes.
Nope.
It's this one, right?
All right?
No, no.
Oh, no, you're okay with that? Um, it's, um... It's got two of them. Where is it? Where is it in the screen? Right, oh, there it is, that one. There's another one. Right here. Okay, I'm in a hurry. Oh, what's on, cutters? What's that? Here.
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Let me just make sure we're doing it the right way.
That'd be basic.
Okay. Okay. Back in session? We've had executive session, the recommended action is to, we're gonna take the two items separately, okay? The recommended action is to, um, approve item A. Do I have a motion? Bob, do I have a second? Who's that? Michael Marizio. We have a recommendation to approve item A. There are one, two, three, four items that we're gonna do separately in item A. That is the assistant modified wrestling coach, the seven, eight baseball coach, the varsity softball coach, and the volunteer auditorium tech at the North Syracuse Junior High School. Okay, all in favor of those?
It was the high school, not the junior high.
Um... Oh, high school, sorry, sorry about that, it's at the high school, sorry about that. That's the volunteer auditorium tech supervisor at the high school, you got that? Okay, recommended action is to approve those, those as submitted, all in favor? Opposed? One opposed, you've got that?
Yep.
Two?
Still opposed.
No, okay, you were good, right? So, so it's, it's, it's eight, yes, one, no, okay?
Seven.
Seven?
Yes.
Okay. Um, that's right, Pat's not here, I forgot. Uh, all right, then, the remainder of personnel A, all in favor? That's unanimous. You got that, Connie? That make sense? And then the recommendation on personnel B is to acknowledge personnel B as submitted, all in favor? Well, first we needed a motion. I'll make the motion, I need a second. Scott made the second, and then we're all in favor of acknowledging personnel B. We got it?
Yep.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we move into executive session for the purpose of receiving an update on negotiations with the principals bargaining unit, teachers aides bargaining unit, teachers assistants bargaining unit, and office personnel bargaining unit, and to review the employment history of five individuals with action to follow on two contractual matters. Second? Uh, Michael D'Onofrio, all in favor? That's unanimous and worded.